All right. I'm calling the meeting of the Los Altos Planning Commission to order on January 17, 2009. We have a quorum. Commissioners Ho, Mosley, and Samick are absent. The rest of us are here. The first item is to ask if there is someone from the public who would like to make a comment on an item that's not on the agenda.
Commissioner Bresik, just for the record, I think you collectively should agree on who will be the acting chair for this meeting since we're absent both our chair and vice-chairperson.
For the record, I'm pointing at acting chair.
Since I was the last previous chair, I will act as chair on this one meeting.
You're Lee Rusty.
Just in passing. The reason I asked in particular, not that we don't always, for public comments not on the agenda is we've received this document, and is it relevant to one of the items on our agenda?
It is. I think it's item number two, the study session.
Okay, thank you. Didn't look familiar. All right. So seeing that there are no other items not on the agenda to be discussed tonight, I'm going to move to the consent calendar where we have the minutes before the holiday, which was the meeting of December 6. Are there any comments or corrections or additions to the minutes from the commission?
I just have one item of good news is although I was absent, I did review the tapes, so feel prepared to cast a vote for the minutes.
Can I have a motion, please?
Move to approve the minutes.
I second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? No? Okay, we are, this minutes are approved. The first item on our-
Commissioner Bresik, before you move on to your first item, can I do a couple of introductions to-
Absolutely.
...new staff members sitting here at the table? First, I'd like to introduce Heather Lee, who's with our city attorney's office, VBK. Heather will be attending the majority of our planning commission meetings in the future, so she'll be a familiar face. And I'd also like to introduce our newest assistant planner, Eliana Hassan. Eliana has been with us since October, so this is her first planning commission meeting, and she hails from Colorado and brings a lot of good planning experience and background with her, so we're looking forward to having her join the team and do presentations to you, the planning commission, this evening. So we're asking you to be nice this evening. We want you to come back for future meetings.
Thank you, Heather and Ellie. Welcome for coming. Okay, the first item on our regular calendar is a study session for 444 and 450 First Street. Anybody who would like to speak on this particular item who is not the applicant should fill out a card, which is in the lobby, and hand it up to staff so it can come to me. Other than that, can we have a presentation from staff on this to begin?
Absolutely. Good evening, Chair for the evening and Commission, as Actall Planning Manager with the city. This item before you is a design review study session. This is for a proposed multifamily residential project at 444 and 450 First Street. I'm also taking this opportunity to give you a glimpse of our new downtown sketch-up model. And it actually does have, these projects have not yet been approved, but you will be seeing them shortly across the street. You can see, too, how it works. We've built the base model, all the buildings in white, that's the base, and then as each project moves forward, they plug their model in, and then we can have a better understanding of all of the relevant relationships. So the project site is located, I'm circling with my pointer, 444, 450, right here. It is on kind of the southwest side of First Street, and it backs up to Foothill Expressway, and it is almost directly adjacent to the three-story condo building at 396 First. And then to the south is the parking lot with the two-story office building, and then kitty corner across the street is the new three-story office building, relatively new building at 467 First Street. So that's a little bit of our context there, and the nice thing is, is I can kind of drive it around and check out different angles as you're interested, but we don't actually have that project here yet as it's still in its conceptual phases, but when it comes before you next, you will see it plugged into this context as well. So with that said, I will just provide a brief outline. As is with other study sessions, the goal is to focus on the architectural and site design of the project, providing that early design feedback to the applicant, and then following this, a formal application will be submitted. We'll go through transportation review, sequel review, and then a full application will come back for your formal consideration and recommendation. So this project is seeking, is proposing, it is a more modern four-story building, and it is looking to provide 26 residential units with two levels of underground parking. And with that, I would like to turn it over to the applicant team, and I know they have a presentation, and I am also available for questions either now or throughout the process.
Any questions for staff at this time? No? Okay, then. Take it away, guys. I still do not have any requests to speak on this project.
I want to speak on the project.
You need to fill out a card.
Well, that's not a must, that's voluntary action. The card is not required.
The name is not required, but I think the card is where-
But I don't think I have to fill out the card.
Well, if you fill out a card, then I can call you by your name when it's your turn.
You can fill it up, but you don't have to, you know, regulation.
Yeah. Just makes it easier for us. You can go ahead. Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening.
Before you start, I want to read what you have here. Please note the completion of this card is voluntary.
It just helps us with the record because we put your name in the minutes, and it's appropriate to have the spelling of your name so that we get that correct.
That's okay.
Yeah, thank you.
Zach, can you raise the mic for him?
In a minute, but is the mic on? Thank you. Good evening, commissioners, staff. Thank you very much for your time. My name is Sia Vash-Moazami. I go by Sia. I'm with Dutchens Development. We're the owner of 444, 450 First Street, and on behalf of Dutchens Development, I just wanted to say we're honored to be here tonight to be proposing a project, and a prominent project in the downtown, and we hope, you know, we can deliver on a project that's, you know, of great character and continues the very nice transformation that's happening downtown and contributes to the pedestrian experience and the overall, you know, goals of the downtown. Been working with staff the past few months, adjacent property owners, and, you know, as of recently, some concerned neighbors to, you know, come up with a concept that we think is reasonable and potentially win-win. We're here tonight to present, you know, some potential architecture for feedback, but I'd like everyone to know that, you know, we're excited about the project and want to work with staff and our neighbors and the community to do something that's nice that we can, you know, all be proud of in the future. So I'm here to answer any questions that you have, but I think our architect, who, you know, has prepared these nice drawings, would like to spend a few minutes walking you through his presentation, and I'll be here if you have any questions. Thank you.
Good evening, commissioners and staff. My name is Chris Hall. This is Ben Anderson. We're the architects. Sorry, excuse me. Let's see here. So we have about, I don't know, maybe an eight to 10-minute presentation. It's basically the same content, I think, as the book that you received. It's slightly reorganized into a slide format, but just go forward.
I think the left and right arrows should toggle. If not, I can-
Yeah. Well, if you could just advance it. So some of this is actually a little redundant with Zach's intro. I didn't realize he was going to lay the context for me, but, and he has a much better model, which hopefully we can borrow for our model eventually, but just to talk a little bit about the overall context. 15,000 square foot site flanked on one side by Foothill Expressway, on the other side by First. It is in a kind of prominent gateway location, both visible vehicular-wise from Foothill as well as First Street, but also kind of, I imagine, an entryway into the downtown as a lot of people are coming off Foothill and onto First Street. So, you know, we're very cognizant of that. There are a few other projects I'm going to cite, which I'll just call out here, and is there a pointer or no? I don't know. Anyway, Zach mentioned the three-story multifamily directly to the north. More recently, 100 First Street up on the north side of the downtown triangle in the same context between First Street and Foothill. And then there was a project we were looking at, and we have some images of down on San Antonio Road towards El Camino Real that has the Stanford Medical on the ground floor that we were kind of inspired by some of the materials and massing of that project. If you could advance it. Slightly more local context, to the south, and this is looking obviously north on First Street, to the south you have the Interro site with a parking lot. Unclear if and when that will be developed, so the southern facade of our project will be visible across this open parking lot in the beginning. And, yeah, can you go to the next one? So much more crude than Zach's model, but this is just a quick mock-up of the massing that we're proposing to give you a sense of the scale of the building relative to First Street and to adjacent structures. Next slide, please. Plan view, a couple of things I wanted to point out about the site. I mean, this is obviously existing conditions. There's a narrow remnant parcel between our parcel and the Foothill Expressway right-of-way, which is owned by the county, and we've been in negotiations with in order to include some planting in that parcel to help with the visual between Foothill and the project. The large trees that you'll see in a couple of renderings are on the right-of-way of Foothill Expressway, I believe, and their conifer trees look to be slightly taller than what we're proposing as a structure, so do provide quite a screening element, at least in the direct view towards Foothill. Also, something I should bring up is the parcel adjacent to the north with the number nine on it is currently, it has changed hands recently, and there's, I believe, a proposal in the works for development of that parcel. The reason I bring it up is because we were asked to coordinate our efforts with them to integrate them together for a couple of reasons. I mean, for practical reasons, just not to redundantly create access and use any advantage that doing it together would provide, but also, I think mostly, to just create a nicer frontage on First Street with more room for things like parallel parking and one curb cut. So you'll see how that is integrated into our project as we circulate through here. So, next slide. This is a view of the, a rooftop view of the massing of the building. The inner rectangle with the U is the fourth floor, so you can see the fourth floor is diminished. The sort of outer rectangle is the bottom three floors, and then the pink is the property And then this is, you know, an early conceptual of, you know, what the pedestrian experience, what the, you know, really what all of our experience will be, kind of eye level, either driving in a car. We chose the direction from the north to the south because it kind of expresses, I think, the residential character of the building and shows you the kind of entryway and the units, how they front on First Street, but to the right, obviously, is your entryway down into the ramp. One thing I wanted to point out is we're providing sort of like an 18 to 20-foot drop-off, pickoff area to the bottom right, which allows for that to happen out of the public right-of-way. The lobby is kind of an 18-foot-deep exterior foyer on the outside with landscaping and seating for a nice drop-off and pickup area. And then there's a marquee that kind of provides shade. You can see the number 450, but that's meant to be a marquee that sticks out an additional couple of feet and provides about 10 feet of shade and shadow for that entry. And then I'm going to talk more in a future slide about the residential interface further down the line where the units front on First Street, but we're trying to create this sense of like address for the units to both create a scale that's nice for the pedestrian, but also kind of provide something special for those ground floor units to be able to receive guests through those doorways along the street. Within the right-of-way, this sidewalk that we're showing here is a five-foot sidewalk, which is an extension of the width of the sidewalk, I believe, to the north, and then we are showing tree planting wells within the parallel parking strip. We would also think we would need to figure out some sort of a loading, a drop-off and pickup loading zone that's in the right-of-way of the street as well for garbage pickup and stuff like that, which we can talk about in a future slide as well. So if you can go to the next. This is the First Street elevation. You know, I think the big things we want to kind of hit on is the, you know, the breakdown of the massing to create residential scale, the differentiation of the fourth floor as kind of a lighter element to not seem too heavy. As you can see, the little plan view up on the top shows you the kind of in and out of the balconies, and so those three balconies where you see little tables on it, those are all private, you know, semi-private balconies that are on the street, but the balconies are indented into the mass of the building rather than projecting out of it, and then you can also see the common entry lobby. The dash line to the right with the large tree in front of it, we don't know what the design is yet in terms of elevation for 440 First Street or the proposed design, obviously, because it's not, it's in process right now, but that is estimated to be roughly the massing, and then that would be somewhat in line with the three-story building, which is the next over. Next slide, please. This is just a preliminary exploration of materials. I think we like the palette of kind of a smooth stucco, similar to that 100 First Street project and also that project on San Antonio Road as the main material. Unfortunately, you can't really see the stucco color, it's washed out, but kind of a cream color, and then the contrasting color of like a darker metallic for the windows and perhaps the awning, and then some stone and wood materials that are closer to the kind of human touch walking by that are, you know, detailed very nicely and limited in application but are down more towards the ground level, so there's little stone walls and these little portico. Oh. Okay, let's speed up here. This is the elevation facing Foothill. You can see there's a sound wall and visual planting, or sorry, planting barrier within that, within that remnant parcel proposed. You can see kind of ghosted in the conifer trees that are along there and the usable yards in the back. Next. This is, again, an elevation that's facing Interro and will be somewhat prominent, so I think we'd like to refine this as we go forward, but we're trying to break it down, create light wells and kind of, you know, accentuate the elevation somehow so it doesn't seem too blank, but the reality is it is on the property line, and it is likely in the future to be covered by another building, so it can't have windows that are promising a view to the buyers of the units. Next. This is a section, a detailed section showing the frontage on First Street. The main portion of the building is set back 10 feet from the property line. The highest level is, the fourth floor is 20 feet, and there's some minor encroachments into that for the marquee and the first-floor portico. I think that's about 18 inches into that. And then you can see the back terrace designed, too, on Foothill with the sound wall. Next. And then this is what I was talking about, the residential entryways that are on First Street, so an elevated semi-private terrace where you can come in through a gate, and you have this sense of, you know, being near the public right-of-way but being private from it and using it. I think that this design will, we want to, you know, help create a nice experience for the pedestrian, but also create semi-private areas to benefit the residences. Next. Quick breakdown of program. The unit sizes range from 1,000 to 1,800 square feet, and this is kind of where they are placed in the building. It's 40,000 gross square footage and 35,000 net, and I'll just speed up here and go through this. I don't think this is, well, might be interested in this. This, the parking garage, two levels below grade with trash pickup and the servicing to 440, the project to the north, you can see the arrow on the top right, but it is two levels, all kind of, there's no automated parking being proposed and some limited tandem parking, all dedicated to the same unit where it occurs. Next. You can just circulate through these. I think you have it in the packet, but these are kind of proving out that we thought about the interior design in order to inform the exterior design, so we did kind of think through a full concept here. And then here's some inspirational character imagery. I think we like the Mediterranean palette that's quite prevalent in this area, and we want to kind of bring a fresh flavor to it, but the stone, the stucco, and the accents of wood and metal. Next. Actually, next one. And then this is just, again, that project that we sort of liked, the standard baseline, you know, materials used here on San Antonio Road. So, sorry I went over there, but we're-
Thank you.
-take your comments.
Can you go back one?
Yeah.
Do you have specific questions for him?
No, I just wanted to see that.
Any specific questions?
I do have just a couple. Let me find them. Do you have, I feel like the group name is familiar. Do you have other projects that you've done in town?
We, no, we've not. Yeah, no, we actually recently, Ben and I, started this firm platform. I worked formerly at a firm in the city.
Okay. So Duchens though?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Or announce that.
Yeah.
Are there, there's other projects in town by the developer, and someone's nodding, but-
Can I speak from here?
You should come up. People are watching on TV potentially.
Yeah.
I am Bahi Tashin, Managing Director of Dutchens Development, and we do have another project at 5150 El Camino.
Ah, okay. All right. That's, I thought the name was right. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Another question for the architect?
Yeah, and actually, I did have another. It might just be the way I'm reading materials, like on A19, you showed us some of the nice palettes that you might choose. I was a little confused about what the, so you show limestone or composite stone walls, which look to be pointing at the low wall and to create the patio area, but then there's something that looks like it's not just the stucco because it's sort of lined in as, you know, fig bricks or something. Which material is that? I didn't really see anything in the packet.
Yeah, you're right. I'm sorry, that's confusing. That would be the same stone as the lower wall.
As the wall.
Yeah.
All right. Okay, good. Thank you. And then I think that was, well, the other ones, I didn't see where specifically you're, I think it's just mislabeled on the diagrams where the, not this one, but where the bike storage was. That was in one of the earlier ones in our packet. It showed, I think it was just mislabeled because it talks about package lockers.
Oh, yeah. No, that's, yeah, the slideshow presentation isn't exactly the packet, but yes, we were thinking in the lobby there would be lockers to receive shipments, so there's storage. I mean, in these kind of multifamily buildings, storage is key, so-
And that's labeled per the legend, but the bike storage isn't, but I assume it's actually something that's behind there.
Yeah, that's-
Mislabeled as-
That's a good point, and we realize that that will be important, and I think that, you know, we'll find the best location, but maybe in the lower-level garage will be the bulk of the bike storage.
All right. So it's not, so me not finding it wasn't, it's just because you haven't necessarily finalized where you're going to put it, which is fine.
Right.
And then I would say the same thing about, I didn't see any handicap parking laid out in the garage yet. Again, this is early and it's a study session, but that's always something we're going to look for.
Of course. Yeah, well, that-
Okay.
As will the federal government.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. All right. So those were my questions. That's all for clarification.
I have a few questions.
Please do.
Okay. You had mentioned that you were going to try to coordinate with the project that was next door.
Yeah.
And so I see the ramp to the garages, looks like it's squarely on yours. Are you saying you're going to share that? You're going to give them access to that ramp?
Yes, yeah. It is, they will, I mean, perhaps Sia can articulate this better, but I believe that they will have an easement and they will share that ramp, and then we have had a number of conversations with the owner about the point of entry that would work with his design and the levels, because it's a tricky thing with elevations and everything to make sure, and they might phase their project later than ours, so it's something that we're working out, but yes, we've already coordinated with them on the location, and they would share, literally, they would use the ramp, and then they would enter their garage off our, off this 444 property.
Got it. And I'm trying to understand how, you know, when you estimate how much, you know, traffic entrance and egress can handle if you're anticipating just whatever volume they're going to be contributing.
Yeah, I mean, it would essentially be treated as one large garage, even though it's two properties, and it's a two-way ramp, you know, one way in each direction, so I think, you know, I mean, as we proceed, I think we'll potentially have traffic engineers involved, so that would be vetted out, but yeah.
Where do you anticipate, like, the delivery or the folks at Amazon and, yeah, where are they stopping to-
Yeah, let's-
Deliver food and everything else.
Maybe, sorry, Zach, if you can go forward a few, maybe the one with the front elevation. Yeah, sorry, that one. One up, one forward? Yeah, this one. I wish my pointer worked. I actually have another pointer.
Might be, might be here to walk up to the screen.
Oh, yeah.
I mean, this is still being worked out, but I was saying there was going to be a drop-off in loading, and I don't know if that would be a painted curb, so, you know, you can't parallel park there permanently in front of the lobby, so the idea would be that they could pull up and pull forward, and there would still be access to the ramp, and then, yeah, so that would be the loading and unloading. I'm assuming there's a, you know, a move-in, move-out kind of logistics that needs to be dealt with, too, that would be in that zone, but the exact kind of dimensions of that and how to fit in, you know, the tree well, how to fit in the parallel parking and all that, I think we would work back and forth with the city and Public Works to best design that. But yeah, that is where we would anticipate that happening.
So this is a question for staff. If a project absorbs the three or four spots in front of them, don't they then need to recreate that spot? I mean, the parking spots that they're required to do for their project is dependent on what square footage or how many units they're doing, but then if they take away parking that is, I guess, on the street, I mean, do they-
Well, the ramp would definitely, you'd have to take some street parking if you haven't had a curb cut there before and enter whatever's there.
But the net to the city should be zero, right?
Well, ideally, yes. I don't know if our regulations deal with the fact that when you put in a new curb cut to enter a building, you have to replace the parking.
But they're taking away a couple of-
In this case, actually, if you look at this site, there's about four driveway cuts along the frontage, and you've got a crosswalk that comes in, so there's not a ton of on-street parking along this stretch of curb. Really, I think, especially along First Street, and this will be ultimately a decision for the commission as each of these projects come up, is we're looking to achieve a number of things, is maximizing the amount of parking that's preserved while also looking at opportunities for street trees, maximizing the sidewalk width, so there's definitely going to be trade-offs as to what are the desired amenities or mix of amenities that are provided within that public right-of-way. We are looking to get a First Street streetscape plan. Unfortunately, the timing of it, it will probably be behind this along with the three other projects that are moving forward, so we have a number of things that we're looking for from these projects, and staff did strongly encourage this applicant and the adjacent one to find a way to share the garage, so rather than two adjacent driveway ramps, you now have one, which is definitely an improvement both for safety and you're losing, you're increasing or decreasing the amount of curb cut you have. We're also looking for strategic opportunities for bulbouts with street trees, like they've shown in a conceptual sense, an appropriately placed loading zone, and minimizing the amount of on-street parking that's lost. So, well, that information will be detailed and more, but yeah, I think there'll be some trade-offs. Do you want solid parking and no street trees? Do you want to give up a space or two in exchange for some well-placed bulbouts with street trees? We're also looking at seeking a one-foot pedestrian access strip along the frontage to increase the sidewalk width from five feet to six feet, so we're looking at a narrow right-of-way relatively for downtown and trying to figure out the best way to maximize the mix of amenities that occur within that as these new projects move forward.
Got it. I mean, I like the idea of a bulbout, but not if there's only two on the entire, you know, street.
Well, we've got this project, there's the project across the way at 425, down the way at 389, so you, there's some bulbouts that were built as part of the project at 467 First Street, and we're looking at, and unfortunately, as it does, since we don't have a full streetscape plan, we have to look at the best way to incorporate these at a driveway where you naturally want some separation, where you wouldn't want parking directly adjacent to it, or at a crosswalk where you want to create additional shelter for a pedestrian, so mixing those elements in and finding the best mix of them, and so as these projects move forward, you'll, as a commission, have an opportunity to look at it, but as a staff, that's what we're looking to try to think through and provide opportunities for, is for commission and council as you look at these projects.
Okay.
Zach, do you-
I'm curious also if, in terms of the parking, you guys considered the stackables or-
We did, and, you know, that's an option that's gaining popularity in certain circles. I think we prefer, and we just think it's something nice to offer the residents to not have to deal with that, so we've instead elected to go slightly lower ceiling heights but go two levels, and to utilize, tandem parking is another way to increase parking, you know, without having to increase the aisle length, and that, you know, is functional when two, when it's owned by the same unit, so there's some limited tandem to fill in some of the extra spaces. But we do have, I believe, 56 parking spaces for 26 units, so it's two per unit plus four. Yeah.
Marus, did you have some questions?
Mayrus, did you have some questions as well?
Do you know if the project next door is going to be two levels underground as well? The one that is going to be right next to them?
Yeah, I've.
Oh, maybe you might know.
I, I can't speak, oh, sorry, who, was that question for?
Someone behind you.
I guess.
Okay.
I just wanted to reiterate that we, we are taking three curb cuts existing today and reducing that down to one. So the shared driveway approach is something that staff asked us to do and the applicant for the potential future project is actually here and sitting. So if, if the opportunity, if it's the right platform, we can invite him up to speak. But there was coordination from, you know, the depth of our garage and how we will, you know, look at the driveway approach. And there's going to be, you know, joint maintenance agreements and a lot of things that we'll have to work through that we haven't completely baked at this point, but we're trying to, you know, create a better street scene, more safety, better pedestrian experience. So I think, to your point about, you know, net loss for parking along First Street today, I think there'd be a net gain. It just really depends on what the city would like for bulbouts and, you know, et cetera, so.
Thank you.
I guess I just meant, in terms of that project, it seems like that project is not going to be as big as yours by any means. So I just think that if their underground parking with your underground parking, it might be, you might want to discuss with them how you want to tackle that, because it might be a good idea to just have it all, instead of having yours be two levels underground and theirs being one level underground. There might be a way to synergize it so that you can fit, so that way you don't have 14 tandem parkings. You might be able to kind of combine it into one large underground. I don't know, just something to think about.
We're, we're.
Sounds like they're working on it, but it's progress.
We're certainly open to, you know, coordinating the effort with our adjacent property owner, so.
Okay.
Other questions for the, for the architect?
I have one. In the S's and small unit on sheet A12, there's a room called the office den that's 10 by 13 that has no light and no air. I believe that it needs to be 50% open to an adjacent space to borrow light, but it, it's on dead walls and the corridor. And two of the three BMR units are these guys. Now, the upper unit could have skylights, so it could have light. It might be that people will only use this for television, but we all know that it's more likely to be someone's office or an extra room, even if it doesn't have a closet. Someone might want to, oh my God, sleep in it. This space is, it fell out of the plan, but I think it needs to be addressed because it's not legal unless you hang clothes in there.
Yeah, well, it, it's not a bedroom.
Hasn't got a closet, I got it.
Right. And I'm not sure about the thing that you're saying about 50% connected, but we can certainly verify that in the code. I mean, with a double-loaded corridor building at this floor plate depth, obviously you have to deal with your space in the back and it's very functional storage space, or as you pointed out, maybe an office or den space. But I, I recognize what you're saying, which is why it's not a two-bedroom, it's a one-bedroom plus.
I got it, but you probably want to take a look at that because I, at the very least, it would be nice if the units, that unit which is dead in that corner had a skylight on the under-roof level where there's currently a planter right over it.
Okay, yeah, that's a good point.
So you could do that. So one of the three units could have natural light and then the ventilation, I assume there's mechanical ventilation. If there isn't, you'll need to put it in. But other than that, I would be very distressed if I saw two of the four BMRs having this bonus space which someone will no doubt use, but not terribly usable.
Right.
So that's my one question for you guys. Follow-up?
Yeah, I, I recall, there's one that's a question or observation, which is, I didn't actually see the non-interior side, the 440 side in the plans. Obviously, that is higher probability, if not certainty, of being impacted by something. So there's no, unless I missed it, there's no elevation of that side.
Yeah, that's correct. I mean, the reason I didn't, well, we will draw that elevation.
That's kind of where.
The reason, it, it will be roughly a mirror of this elevation, but, but, and it will have a light well, which, but because there will be development directly kissing it, for lack of a better word, that, you know, those walls will not be visible. So it's more about the light well design and then designing how the ramp will look, but we will provide that elevation, yeah.
And those light wells provide natural light in areas that wouldn't otherwise be legally occupied spaces. So I think that we're okay quizzing you for now.
Yes.
Yeah, okay.
All right, then I have two requests to speak, one from Fred Falla. Thank you.
Thank you. Well, thank you for the opportunity. Actually, I'm the owner across from the Foothill and I kind of got the notice a little late. So what I gave you is basically two actual photo of the light intrusion and privacy, yes. One is shot this morning about 5:00 AM and then the other one is about 6:00 PM. So the main problem I have with this building, I mean, the architecture material is beautiful, they did a great job, but it's the height and bulk of it. And I think our basically attempt here is to make sure the bulk and the height is compatible with surrounding and doesn't invade the privacy of the residential unit across the street. As you can see, there are trees, I mean, they show a graphic, but actual picture tells you the story better than anything else. So just imagine another story above what you see in that picture with the lights shining into the neighbors and how intruding that privacy is. And the CCO document that was basically mentioned, the staff report, doesn't really say about additional 12 feet high, which is not allowed in that zoning. So I think you need to pay attention to that. And again, part of the CCO process is that you want to make sure it does abide and conform to the other requirement of that section, which is the traffic noise. I'm sure they're going to design it so nice that, you know, the parking and inside of those units would be sellable to buyers, but you need to be concerned about people who are living right now and the character of the Los Altos. This is a very famous, what we call a converted matchbox. I mean, basically, if you have a match that you put in on the flat face, you put it up high and you don't use any gable or slope roof to gain additional, you know, story, which is good for developer, but I mean, across from the street for the residential neighborhood and people are living there, you're just looking at their bedroom directly. And those are, those are the points I want to mention that, I mean, right now, the concern at this preliminary stage is the bulk, height, traffic and noise. And my major concern is, is the height. So architectural character materials are beautiful. I mean, I don't have any problem with that. And I want to compliment the architects who presented what they have. I'm not the only one. I mean, there are a lot of people on Palm Street that have the same issue. And if you look at those photos that I took, I mean, you can see how bad it is. Again, I didn't have time to shoot any photo like around 10:00 PM or 11:00 PM because I had to come here. Thank you.
Thank you. The next request to speak is from Ramin Shahidi.
Hi, how are you? My name is Ramin Shahidi. I'm at 502 Palm Avenue, right next to Mr. Falla's residential. I am also impacted by the bulk of this building. However, and my main concern really is the light pollution. The way this building today is presented has put zero consideration of the fact that the fourth floor has floor-to-ceiling windows and a glass railings and about 36 high-intensity LED lights in the ceiling. When those lights come out at light, there is no barrier between those and my bedroom. So I pretty much have a stadium lights looking right into my bedroom. Having said that, I am in support of this project. I am in support of development in town. The developers extend me the courtesy of meeting with me in person and promise that in their next consideration of designs, they would address the line of sight in particular into the two residents of Mr. Falla and I, which are mainly affected by this building. We would like to ask the commissioners to ask the staff to extend us the courtesy of meeting us in timely manner. We asked Zach to meet us on this plan. I asked Zach to meet me on this plan and on this building. The day that I got the yellow card, within an hour, I asked Zach and the response that I got is I don't have time to meet with you until this, after the meeting. And we would, as much as I like Zach and I find him one of the most pleasant faces of this administration, I would like to ask the community to remind the administration as a whole from, and I think comes from above, that they are here to serve the population and of the Los Altos and address our concerns. And during the same time that Zach did not have time to meet with me, he met with developers several times. So, and we would like to make sure that our concerns are heard and we are not relying on the courtesy of the developers, who in this case have showed very high caliber and very good, you know, will to meet with us and, and give us assurance that our concerns are met. But really, we shouldn't be relying on their courtesy. We should be relying on our staff to meet with us, take our input and then design these things accordingly. Having said that, I think this building is beautiful. And I think the building on the First Avenue, the one across the one that had a lot of controversy, ended up being one of the most beautiful buildings in town. So I commend you guys for making sure that that happened. But the green barrier between the Foothill and the residential area of the old Los Altos and the backside of the downtown is something that really needs to be addressed. And the bulk of these buildings could easily be mitigated by simple tree barriers, several green tree barriers between the Foothill on the right side and on the Lincoln side. And it's a relatively inexpensive way to mitigate this issue, allow the development in town. So our town can prosper without interfering with our privacy.
Thank you, Mr. Shahidi.
Thank you everybody for your time. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Shahidi. I have no other requests to speak, so I'm going to close the public.
Can I ask staff about?
Of course.
So I know that the trees on Foothill are dictated by the county, but like this area right here before this wall, you wouldn't need the tall trees that you need on Foothill because it's significantly closer to block a much larger structure behind it. Like, why can't this get?
We would, we would have to talk to our Public Works. I'm not sure how much of a shoulder area is between that sound wall and the edge of pavement. I know it's a little bit tight in there, but we could definitely explore that and see what opportunities we have on that side. One thing that is coming up and, and we're still working on the exact extent of the plans is there is a planned project on Foothill Expressway from just to the north of San Antonio through El Monte that will be widening. And I believe those sound walls may be getting reconstructed as part of it because they will be using more of that right-of-way for the lane space because there's adding a lane, I think, in each direction.
These sound walls right here, these guys?
I, I don't know, but I know that that's part of the plan and I don't know if it extends this far up. But that's one of the things we'll need to better understand is the extent of that project. And we may need to wait until that project's done before we can do further planting, because I, I believe that those sound walls are going to be pushed to the edge of the Foothill right-of-way. So whether those are there now or not, we'll have to see. So that's something, we'll have more information when this project comes back, but I know it's definitely a consideration as they go through the design process for the, the widening on that stretch of the hill.
Okay. Who's prepared to start discussing? We all look meaningfully down to the end. Mayrus?
Oh, yeah, I can go.
Thank you.
Okay, so first off, I think the project is successful. I like what it's doing a lot. I do have a few things that I think need to be discussed, though. So the number of units, I know it says 26 and I'm fine with 26, but I just think that it's going to be important to kind of figure out the density and especially because I think there's three or four projects in this immediate area that are being developed pretty soon. So I just think that some type of study as to how you got 26 units, even if it's as simple as this is how it looked with the perimeter and we got 26, just some type of knowledge about how you got 26, I think would be helpful for the next round. Just because 59 units per acre, I don't know if that's, you know, ridiculous compared to the future projects that are coming, or I don't know if that's in line with the future projects that are coming. In terms of the elevation facing Foothill Expressway, the open balconies and the glass railings, to me, it seems like a mistake. Based on the two other projects that are on Foothill Expressway, I see pretty much no one on those balconies and they're never used. So I just don't think that having all glass with the glass railing, I don't think it's a, it's the right move. I don't think residents, with all due respect, I don't think residents want to look at Foothill Expressway. And I don't think people on Foothill, Foothill Expressway want to look directly into units. So I would, I would maybe do what you, what you did on the front, the wood railing effect. I would just maybe replicate that and put that on that side, maybe even make some parts of it private, because if you see on the fourth floor, those outdoor spaces are completely open. So I don't know how much someone is going to want to be out there with Foothill Expressway right there. And then, oh, and then the outdoor entry and the courtyard. So you have seating in front and I would decrease the size of that area, maybe even by half, and increase the lobby space. I know that the guidelines had mentioned having pedestrian amenities, but realistically, I don't think someone is going to walk from Main Street to that far down. So I don't think that having a pedestrian amenity like that is really useful. So I, if I were you, I would make the indoor lobby space bigger. I don't think that outdoor space needs to be that big. But I do like the idea of having a space in the front. I just think it's a little bit too big. But yes, so overall, though, I would say that, yes, I think that the project is well-articulated in terms of height, except for what I mentioned on the Foothill Expressway elevation. I think the proportions and the scale are fine and I think that the material choices, except for the glass, I think are, are good. So overall, I would, I would be approval, approving of this project.
Okay, we're neat.
I'm also supportive. I was really happy to hear that one of your inspirations was the building on San Antonio, the Stanford Medical Building, because I think that building, it just is really well-done. And I drive by it twice a day and drive my kids to school and I just think they did a really, I love the palette and they did a really good job. One of the things that I actually, I had thought of before you said that was what's missing here is what they did in terms of bringing green to the side. So they actually pushed back their building and they put a very generous landscape. And I think that makes the pedestrian experience better. I do think that our folks in our town are walk, especially the ones that are living across the Foothill, that's the path that they're coming into our downtown. And right now, what they've got is basically like a wall of stone and then wood trellis and there's no green, sort of, at all. Kind of in a very different way. I mean, the green is right on the other side, but it sort of made me think about the Schwab Building where there was like nothing, absolutely nothing all around that building for, of green that they contributed to the city. I think, so I would look at that inspiration and see how you can incorporate some of that. I do like, maybe, you know, split the difference, but I actually do like the little entry that is open to the community, because these, you know, the, the folks living downtown, in the downtown are going to be, you know, a really dynamic population and they want to, I would hope, to be able to sit outside at their greeting, not greeting people, but there's, there's something that connects them at the entry. I like the palette of stucco wood. I like the palette of stucco wood and stone. You know, the metallic for the windows, I think it's got to be the right color, like it was in that other building. I do agree that glass railings just doesn't always work. And I think that adding metal or even wood is a really good idea to give both a little more privacy and have us, people not really seeing all the stuff that people keep on their decks, when they think no one's looking. In terms of the side, it sounds like, you know, with that other project coming, that there's really, it's going to be a very short window where we're going to be looking at it. But on the other side, I would invest more time, because that may be a longer period of time that people are looking at that. And hopefully, it's not a blank wall. I really love the roof deck. I love that, I love when people utilize that space to create common area that adds green to the residents. I think that's a nice touch. I think that this is a really, I think it has the potential to be a really beautiful building. And I think it will help camouflage the project that we have, you know, really disliked, been unhappy with, just to the north. I kind of, I need, I will want a better understanding of how there's going to be coordination with the building next door. I'm a little concerned that that building will end up looking like it's part of it, but like, if it's a totally different style, I mean, if it's going to have a connected garage, it will feel like it's one large building. And so it really, will it be the ugly stepsister? Or is it going to, going to, you know, be integrated? Because by committing to sharing the driveway, you're essentially irretrievably marrying yourself to that, to that building. So I'm, I want to understand that a little bit more. But I like what I see. I think it's the, it's the right size and proportion in terms of what we're going to be seeing in our downtown to add more housing.
Okay. Great. So first of all, thank you for a nice package. This is actually nicer than some of the official submittals we get. So thank you for putting the time in that and helping us understand your project and where you're going with that. So, and I would say it does help provide balance to the sore trauma, if you want to call it that, makes it a little less sore. But really, that whole end of town is going to become more residential, and it's really going to help to have this in there, to, and then the other ones that come along. It's going to feel, I think, a lot more homey and residential down there as a whole. I also really like your, I guess you'd call it inspirational character, both your choice of the building that you're using and then some of the pictures that you're showing us. I won't repeat the great points about Foothill Expressway and the decks and all that, so that's certainly true. I think, staff, you may know, the Interro Building is relatively newish, though it's certainly not maxing out the property. So I wouldn't think that's a high probability of fast turnover. Maybe it's moderate, or maybe it's not even viewed. Because I know along El Camino, we related, we raided the properties, the staff did, about, you know, this is going to go any day now, this is midterm, and this has been redone, and so it's not. So where I'm going is, I think, where Renee was going, which is, first of all, what is the assessment of that property? I don't think it's going to be like high rapid turnover, like within-
You haven't had any nibbles, have you?
Right. And so if that's going to be there a long time, or even a medium amount of time, that side really needs to be spruced up. And I can understand not going with all the windows, that'll be impacted with zero property lines, but it's really got to look nice, I think. And the other side is obviously more understandable, given the imminence of that. But I would really, that Interro property was actually one of the earlier nice additions to First Street, and so I think we want to respect that and have a nice boundary there. Let's see. When you come back, we're going to want to see, and Zach gave us a hint of his new model, we're going to want to see how that fits into the streetscape there, both with the big one next door. I mean, it's big because it's, ground level's a little higher than one would have wanted.
First floor is elevated.
The first floor is elevated, there's the way to put it. So anyway, those views are going to be very important, and the streetscape views. Talking about the entry, and we had, you know, one make the exterior less and more to the lobby, the other one will maybe split the difference. I mean, there's something there that you can do that maybe speaks more entry you are home. And I don't know which of those solutions or something, I mean, it sounds very nice and inviting, but it may not have an obvious, you know, it could just be a little bit more pronounced. I don't know what you can do with that, but you can fiddle some more. I thought, in terms of the units, and if you're obviously working with 5150, you know the density there is high. I wonder if, and I think council goes back and forth on, when you look at something in terms of the dwelling units per acre versus the number of units you're actually getting for approving a development and the potential for more BMRs, these extra-large ones, and even the large, you know, half, it feels like half of this project is some very big units. I mean, Los Altos has a demand for condos, but we also would like to get more BMRs. So your proportion is right, because you're at the 15%. But if you increase your density per acre, then there could be more units overall, albeit smaller. So you're going to want to think about how, not only bring it back to us with all the justifications and density bonus and all that, but in the long term, if you can figure out where you think council is going with that, this may not be enough units for them, given the size. Because they go back and forth between studios and one bedrooms.
And there's a new council.
And there's a new council, anyway.
It will be hard to predict what the council will do at this point.
Right, it is.
There's no history.
But it is worth at least providing some thought as to, you know, because you're just under 1,000 square feet on the smallest of them. And sometimes they talk about the micro-units, or at least a studio, and these are, you know, the extra-larges are pretty big. I mean, they're bigger than some single-family homes. So whether that's the right blend to take forward or not, I don't know. And I know that requires a lot of rejiggering. There's certainly demand for it. But again, they might be looking for a higher density, especially in terms of BMRs. But, let's see, I think that's most of it. Again, I think you've sketched out some great ideas and great materials for using, so it looks good so far.
Okay. So I think we seem to have a consensus here that this is a project at this design level, which feels like it's comfortable in many levels, both from the inspiration and the It's interesting that we had these two speakers from across Foothill, because we think of it as a completely separate area. But when Safeway redeveloped, Safeway has a blank wall, because the neighbors across the way were very concerned about light pollution coming from a very big building. And so I agree with Mayhous's analysis that, and actually concurrents along here, that maybe all glass is really elegant, but not necessarily the best choice here. And in fact, because the design is so carefully defined between glass material and solid material, maybe you want to consider spandrel glass, so that you can cut down on the light going out without necessarily compromising the design and still getting expansive views, maybe over Foothill. I don't know. It's a tough one. But I think you should consider spandrel if you don't want to, that is, glass that is opaque as opposed to clear. So you have the look of the shine, and you have the structure and the rhythm that you've broken it up, which I think is really excellent. I think there's good human scale and volume in the breaking up of the elements. I think that was very well done. There's also a good variation in the vertical plane moving in and out, also excellent. So, and the material choices, my suggestion to you guys is that when you come back, we are incredibly sensitive at the commission in general about window detailing. And it's one thing to show us your inspiration, but we have been snookered before, and we're not going to get snookered again. So how you detail it, this is clearly schematic, and I appreciate that. It would be important to talk about and show actual, is there trim? If there's no trim, how does it meet the solid? And is the window in the plane? Is it recessed in the plane? Is there a shadow line? That kind of stuff is going to be very important. And just as a point of reference, the north elevation faces due north, that whole area is going to be in shade for most, that is the shady side of the street. And so when you're thinking about greening it up, you should, if possible, learn from the neighbors further down on First who have made, some of them have made a really good green aspect. I think Renee's point is very valid, that as we get more and more people living here, and it's going to be a living area up and down First Street, whereas formerly, it was really the leftover zoning, anything that couldn't fit anywhere else was there, those are pretty much disappearing. And so having a green pedestrian access is really important, and maybe that's a revision that you look at in the front elevation, to be able to bring in plantings that are a gift to the street, where perhaps people won't want to sit out in their porch, though it would be nice if they would. I'm interested in the termination of materials, particularly at the top. Again, I realize this is schematic, but there's a lack of definition to the end, there's no cap, there's no detail, it just simply plops over. So I'm concerned about that. In a bigger piece, I like the idea of a roof deck, but I love the idea of solar panels. I love the idea that you might produce energy for your residents. And I think there may be a way to integrate some of that in with the development, as well as, as I said, using some of the roof, not only for the roof deck, but also to get natural light in the upper level. It seems like an opportunity missed, since you do have a roof and there are ways to do that without too much difficulty. For the number of units, I'm okay with that. I understand, it's an important thing for you to understand that this approach of council is going to be in flux until we see what the new council comes up with. But I was okay with the number of units, I was okay with the distribution, with the exception that the S's in small had this space that really could be much better somehow and legal at the same time. I have a personal peeve, which I, I'm probably the only one who says it every time, in undifferentiated stucco walls, in that I would much rather see stucco screeds that break them into human scale and prevent diagonal cracking at the windows, where the windows meet the stucco in the five-year term. Because we're looking for minimizing, we ask for high-quality materials, hopefully with minimal maintenance. And if you have an undifferentiated stucco plain, I think it doesn't read as well as if you can have some kind of screeds that break it into human scale even there. And as for the front entry or not, it really depends on what you want to do. If you want to make people sit there, then I think you have to make a guess as to whether having a small wall to protect you so you feel like you're set from the street is different than having benches on 400 Main, where there are benches and people sit on them because they are not part of the building, they're part of the pedestrian experience. So that's a choice for you to think of. I think it's brilliant to have one curb cut instead of three. I love that you're consolidating that. I'm much less concerned with the ugly stepsister, because no one will know that they're related, because it's all under the dress. It's in the driveway. And except for the signage that will say this number and that number, really, I think it would be good if they were coordinated in design. But I'm much more concerned, as you all were, with one elevation that we think will change but isn't going to change for a while. And so how you can articulate what's in essence a flat plain with a very small light well in it, in such a way that you don't care when it gets covered up later, but at least for the X number of years we all have to look at it, it's not too bad. So, have we got everybody's comments?
Is there any value in suggesting that maybe they meet with the commissioners that aren't here? Only because-
Yeah.
-next time you will meet with us, all seven will be here. I'd hate for you to get new comments after-
Well, you might feel like you've got whips on. I think that's a great point. So in general, if you request commissioners to meet with you individually, they usually meet with you on city property with your planner, so that you can have a meeting that you can talk about what your ideas are, and later it will come out, people will say that they met you ex parte, which is what we'll be doing. But I agree with you, that's a great idea.
Great.
All right. Thank you very much for your time, and I'm sorry we aren't more of us, but we gave you the best we could. Our next item for discussion is, I think, Elliot, we're going to talk about cannabis prohibition ordinance 18CA07. And if anybody would like to speak about that, pass your green card up to staff, please. Okay, guys, take it out, take it out. Okay. Staff.
Good evening, commissioners. As John introduced me earlier, my name is Elliot Hassan. I'm one of two new assistant planners for the City of Los Altos. And today, or tonight, I'm talking about the amendments to ordinance, to the ordinance in the zoning code for chapter 14.82, which is cultivation of cannabis for personal use. So to give a little bit of summary, the city council is seeking a recommendation from the planning commission regarding amendments to the city's medical and adult-use cannabis regulations that will provide stricter controls on indoor cultivation of cannabis for personal use, which is proposed in section 14.82.030 entitled Cultivation of Cannabis for Personal Use. This section and this entire report was also written in collaboration with the city attorney, who guided some of our draft, who guided some of our draft amendments and helped us through this process. So a little bit of background on this. On November 8th, 2016, California voters approved Proposition 64, which legalized the non-medical use and possession of marijuana by adults over 21 years of age, and provided for some state licensing of the adult-use marijuana business. So following this, the city council adopted and later extended an urgency interim ordinance establishing a moratorium on medical and adult-use commercial cannabis activities, with exceptions for personal cannabis cultivation. So following this, city council introduced and adopted ordinance number 2018-451, which prohibited all categories of commercial cannabis activity. And eventually, this ordinance also prohibited outdoor cultivation for cannabis for personal use and imposed basic regulations on indoor cannabis cultivation. So following up on this, when the city adopted this ordinance, some members of the public expressed concern that personal cannabis cultivation inside a greenhouse or other accessory structure would result in odor impacts to the adjacent properties. So in order to address this concern, we've added two additional requirements for indoor cannabis cultivation, which are proposed as amendments. The first proposed section would require that accessory structures used for cannabis cultivation maintain a setback of at least 10 feet from any property line. And the second proposed section would require that structures that produce cannabis must have proper ventilation and air filtration in order to prevent or minimize odors from leaving the enclosure. And one other part that was put into this regarding nuisances is that if two or more people of normal sensitivity residing on adjacent structures file complaints with the city within a 30-day period, then it could be deemed a public nuisance and could be required to be resolved. The goal of these two amendments is to minimize the potential for adjacent properties to be impacted by odors caused by and related to cultivation of cannabis, while also ensuring that residents are allowed to cultivate cannabis as permitted by the state law. Thank you. That's what I have for the ordinance.
Thanks, Elliot. Questions for staff on this item? Thanks, Elliot. Questions for staff on this item?
I have one question. Do we have data that show, and I know we've had public speakers, and we presumably will have at least one tonight, data that shows that this is a smelly thing to grow up to six? Besides public comment, is there data?
There's no concrete data that was found, but what was found when I was researching and helping to verify some of these amendment suggestions is that various websites that promote the use of personal cultivation of cannabis do mention that there is risk of, there is inherent odor risk with growing this plant, especially during any prime blooming times. So that would be something that needed to be taken into consideration. And that there's no data saying, oh, if you go over this plant threshold, the odor is this. It's hard to find that information.
Is that?
And I might add that we have heard from other cities where they have had outdoor cultivation and even indoor cultivation that generates an odor through the cultivation of the cannabis that is bothersome to neighboring property owners. And I understand that those cities have established similar regulations to the ones they're considering this evening to sort of address that concern.
And those cities are?
I can think of San Luis Obispo that has done that. The other city escapes me right now, but it has been something that's.
And they have a similar number of up to six per?
I think six comes from the state regulations, so that's.
Right, but the state requires that you allow up to six, but a city may allow more than six.
Yes.
So we don't know if they're minimum.
I haven't done a tally on.
Right, okay.
The numbers from other agencies.
Any other questions?
Yeah, I was trying to understand what the other cities have adopted. Like, the 10-foot setback makes sense to me. Doing it inside a greenhouse makes sense to me. Even ventilation, perfectly. But then, when we got to the two people of normal sensitivity, I was like, that just feels really vague. And has anyone even tried that? Or is that something we?
Perhaps Heather can comment on.
Yeah, is that our suggestion, or?
I'm not sure if that suggestion came from our office, the two people as the threshold for nuisance. Did that?
When I examined the draft for it, two people was listed originally, and then there were additional suggested areas for amendment, one of which was included in there, which was the 30-day period. There were a few other recommendations, but those are ones that staff felt were most appropriate for the nuisance.
And I think Ellie is saying that she, in looking at other regulations from other cities, that was, seemed to be things that they included in their regulations. So to try and prevent just one person coming forward and filing a concern about a neighboring property, and then that going away, it seemed like to try and, if it's really, truly, an odor issue, then to at least get two neighboring property owners or residents to come into the city and address their concerns within a 30-day period seemed to be an indicator that it was a potential nuisance.
You're concerned about the descriptors? It should just say two people and now two people of normal?
Yeah, I don't like it at all.
So.
Anything about, it feels like it's ripe for abuse, like a neighbor. It makes me think.
Coalition.
Yeah, and two people means a husband and a wife. And it feels like that is, and then it wasn't just saying it's two people, it says, by definition, it becomes a nuisance. Because two people, I don't even know what normal sensitivity is. Like, if we're going to do that, then there should be like the nose of Los Altos. That person is the decider of all smells. Rather than just have, like, what?
The descriptor got me.
Someone like that has, is incredibly, like, someone in my office is very sensitive.
Wears a mask all the time?
Yeah, where perfume, anything around the individual. Are we going to just say those people don't, if they say?
They don't count, or?
Right, then it feels like.
Plus, is there anything?
I just don't like anything about it.
With the way it is now, is there anything that, no one's prohibited from coming forward and complaining about it now. And you could decide, two people come forward, it becomes a public nuisance. You don't have to have an ordinance specific to that. I mean, there's lots of plants that are public nuisances that cause allergies to people, and my God, you know. So can't anyone come forward and complain about anything? Would they certainly do on next door?
Yes, they could.
Right, so.
And then does staff have to go out, or the police nuisance officer goes out to see what's going on?
Right, right, exactly.
Remind me, like, that sometimes reasonable people can be.
Irrational?
Unreasonable. Like, I just thought of the gentleman who was near the preschool that was really far away and was like, inside my house with the windows closed. When I'm on the phone, I can still hear children. It's just like, you will, there will be some neighbors that will just, it doesn't, doesn't feel like they should have that. I think the greenhouse and the ventilation, I feel like that is.
That's sufficient.
It's a good start.
And if.
If there's a problem.
Well, we're not discussing yet, though. We're asking questions.
No, sorry, I was in discussion.
Well, the question was, is that in someone else's ordinances?
Yeah.
Has that been something, someone else has codified that?
And why does the ability to complain have to be in an ordinance anyway? I mean.
Well, but that's the discussion. So the answer to the question is, no one has found at this moment another ordinance that says two people of normal sensitivity is in the code in someone else's ordinance. Is that correct?
Well, it's not written within, it's not within a California city, but within Colorado, which was one of the earlier states to adapt an ordinance, to adapt policies such as this. I'm within the city of Boulder, which is, well, to be a bit biased, I did go to school there, so I do have a little more knowledge of their policies.
It's so good that you're from Colorado.
So when I was looking into the, when I was looking into the precedents that other states were using and what their policies were on this, Boulder actually, I would argue, had a vager policy than, their policy was more vague than ours was about. They had something for nuisances in their policy. I don't have the exact wording on me, but it basically stated one person with objectively normal sensitivity, which is, there's not a whole lot of precedents that I could find that really demonstrated a very well-established thing for this sort of thing, especially considering odor. It's, it's hard to establish that.
There's nothing measurable. It's not like a noise complaint, where you can go out with a noise meter and take a measurement and say, oh, it's exceeding the.
Or parts per million.
Parts per million, anything like that. I will share that our nuisance ordinance just describes nuisance as being, among other things, offensive to the senses so as to interfere with the comfortable enjoyment of life or property. So we were, I think, attempting to put in the code something that helped us determine, or at least establish a threshold for when it arrived to being a potential nuisance.
Well, let's get our member of the public to speak, and then we will.
Well, did Mayrus have a question?
Oh, no.
No, you're not have a question, okay.
So Ken? Forgive me your handwriting. Echon?
Elkert.
Elkert. Sorry, terrible, forgive me.
Yes, and I did speak to the city council at the time they were considering this ordinance. And I think I looked at the planning commission audio from, or video from when you initially considered the original ordinance. And I think there's a misconception in my mind, you know, if you do a search for marijuana and skunk, you will find a slew of hits showing that there is a connection there. And I myself, my neighbor cultivated marijuana outdoors. And it was very difficult, I had no idea. All I smelled was skunk. And a number of people in my neighborhood also smelled skunk. And they, several people kept their dogs indoors because of, they thought it was skunk infestation in our neighborhood. And I happened to go up on my accessory structure roof to clean it. I have a jacaranda tree, there's purple flowers that fall down. And then I saw my neighbor had, was cultivating marijuana outdoors. And so I think there's a definite connection between the smell of some marijuana plants. And I think people who use certain kinds of marijuana for recreational purposes as opposed to medicinal purposes find attractive the kind of plant that has really the most skunk-like odor, because it gives the biggest kick, from what I've read. And so I looked at this ordinance, and I'm very happy with the changes that have been made. I just had a couple of questions. One was, two people can report, and as one of you, the commissioner said, it can be a husband and wife, absolutely. But, and it said, then that may be considered a nuisance. I wanted to be, instead of may, shall, because I, it's not clear to me what happens if it may be considered, who is going to be the determinant of that? Is that something that goes to the city?
It's the nose of Los Altos again.
Yeah. And to me, it's a bad odor. And the other thing I'd like to mention is that it's Rancho Cordova that has an ordinance on this, and it explicitly calls the odor a public nuisance. And I brought that to the attention of the city council and the city attorney back at the meetings in September and October. So I think this, changes to this ordinance tonight are based on the Rancho Cordova ordinance.
Thank you, Ken.
Yeah.
Can I ask a question? I don't know how many plants you had next door to you, but.
Six.
You counted six?
Yeah, I could see six, yeah.
They were outdoors.
And.
Well, my neighbor said that they were indoors. He had a plastic tent. And he said the tent was an indoor structure. That was his opinion. But just like sheer plastic, no door. But I counted six. And these things are pretty big. I mean, they're laden with marijuana. I mean, I have no problem with people using marijuana. I just don't want to smell it all day, every day, every night.
Can you imagine if he had a proper ventilated with air filtration structure? You would have still had the issue.
Yeah, if he had a structure, and that's why I like the Rancho Cordova ordinance, because it requires that, you know, you have charcoal or whatever to prevent the emission of the odor from the cultivation. It's, the odor is part of the plant.
So this is, we have that part in the ordinance now. So really, the point you're trying to make is, you like the idea of having the ability for a other resident to make comment for a nuisance level. Regardless of what we're requiring them to do, enclosure, filter, if the odor is still getting out, you want the ordinance to have some aspect that allows a neighbor to complain that it be a nuisance?
Yes. I like that. And I wondered as a practical matter, until I saw that it was my neighbor who was cult, I had no idea. And so, just in terms of the practicality, I will just announce to the police, or tell the police, oh, there's an order from somewhere. I don't have to specify the exact source of that order. I don't think I would necessarily know unless I had seen it myself.
Okay. Thank you very much, Ken. I don't see any other requests to speak. Okay. So I'm closing the public hearing, and please, go right ahead.
Okay. So I can understand not liking the skunky smell. But, you know, there's many smells, there's many things that are nuisances, minor to major, on the scale of living in a neighborhood. One of the things we like here at the commission, and also when I served on design review commissions, and we talked about single-family homes and changes to those, we really like the neighbors to talk to each other. Because, you know, having to put ordinances in place for things that really can be better accomplished, or more smoothly accomplished, by neighbors talking together, or if that doesn't go well, then potentially reporting it as a public nuisance, because we already said, there's nothing to prevent any of us from reporting anything as a public nuisance, which, you know, may or may not be reasonable. So I actually do not support, at this point in time, any changes to the existing ordinance. I don't think we have a lot of data, and I think we do have your situation, which, again, I can empathize with. So I'm not trying to downplay that. But I really hesitate to put in place a change to an ordinance, we only recently, and that, no, the public comment is closed. Sorry, we're in comment period now, discussion. Putting in place something to affect the whole city when we really don't have data to show that, yeah, this is actually a big problem. So, in fact, we don't have that yet. So, I mean, I can think of many smells throughout the neighborhood that are bothersome. And some of them are real skunks, and other of them are plants, and, you know. But anyway, I don't, I'm not trying to minimize your concern. I do completely understand that. But I do not think that changing the ordinance, when we really don't have the data that there is a wide-scale problem, it's just, we've already been, in fact, last time, you felt we were being too restrictive, and you voted against the ordinance because it didn't go far enough, as I recall. And so, anyway, I'm not willing to put, you know, to require that accessory structures, if they're for marijuana, have to be further away from fence lines than we require other accessory structures, that we require ventilation for accessory structures. We don't know that we have a problem. If all of a sudden we start getting all sorts of nuisance complaints from all across the town, from many different backyards, then yes, we should do this. But right now, I don't support it.
Okay. Renee?
What, how many people have to support this for it to go through tonight?
Three.
No, four.
All of you.
Oh, it has to be unanimous.
Recommended to council.
I think it's the majority of the.
Our internal policies, yeah. Do you say that a majority of the?
So I'm conflicted. I did think that we were being, this feels alarmist, and, you know, like paranoia about, about it. But it, since the ordinance did pass, and, you know, the, if, I actually don't really have that big an issue with the accessory structure for the purpose of cannabis cultivation being 10 feet away from the property. I don't, I don't mind that. And I also don't mind, you know, that it has a requirement of proper ventilation. I just, I can't, I don't like the idea of people being pitted against each other. Someone just doesn't like the idea of someone growing. They may smell them using and not growing, and they may have phantom smells, and they're normal sensitivity people. And I just, if someone, it says it could be deemed a public nuisance if someone complains. Well, from what you just read in the nuisance provision, one person can make a complaint, and that could be deemed a public nuisance if, after investigation is confirmed to me. So I just, I don't like that one. I would remove that. And I'm interested to hear what the other two commissioners have to say about the first two. Because I did feel it was, everything about this was overly restrictive, but it passed, and so.
Mayrus?
Last one passed, this one didn't.
The last one that I voted against got pushed forward to see council and passed.
Right, exactly. And they were already asking us to change it, or consider changing it.
Because we're paranoid about.
Yeah, exactly.
Well, wait a minute, Mayrus has to have his share. Come on, guys.
Yeah, so anyways, I am not in favor of either of the proposed sections. I think that with the first one, I don't really like the idea of prescribing any type of distance just for cannabis cultivation. I think that the setbacks, to me, should be in conjunction with whatever the respective zoning is. So if it's 10 feet, 15 feet, 20 feet, I think it should just follow that, because it might get into a sticky situation if we just say 10. The ordinance that is referenced discusses guidelines, and it says limiting the number of plants to six, complying with all state and local laws regarding fire safety, water use, electrical wiring, building, and indoor cultivation. To me, all of those things are kind of created to ensure that this public nuisance isn't going to happen. So I just think that the way it's worded, two or more people within 30 days, I think it's a very subjective thing. I think odor is a very subjective thing. And so I don't know if we want to start making subjective decisions. Based on things that I've seen, which I know we're not discussing this in particular, but I talked to John earlier, the cities that are, some of the cities that are nearby, they have a certain size that you limit the cultivations of 50 square feet or 60 square feet. And ours doesn't have that. And ours doesn't have that. And I think that, from what I've seen, when you limit the size, you're essentially limiting the amount of electrical and the amount of odor by limiting the size of it. So I think that's something that might be, something that should be discussed. I don't know if maybe now is not the time, but-
Can you explain that more? I don't understand.
Just limiting the amount, the size of the accessory structure. So it's six plants, but within how big of a space? 1,000 square feet, 500 square feet? A lot of cities limit it to 50 square feet that you can have.
But if it's the bloom that's causing the smell, it doesn't really matter whether you have it in 10 square feet or 50 square feet. I mean, isn't it the number of plants, because that determines the number of blooms?
It only matters if it's enclosed and filtered.
Yeah. So they were saying that because it's a smaller, let's say 50, that it's going to use less electricity, and it's going to use less generator power and everything, because it's going to be a smaller space, which will then produce less odor. So I know there's a few cities, I don't want to name one and be wrong, but I know there's a few cities that limit it to 50 or 60. So I don't know if that's something that we should bring up to the city council, but I think that that's important, because then, you know, the way it is now, it could be a huge 2,000-square-foot space.
Well, no, it still has to fit into our accessory building limit.
It still has to fit with that, yeah.
And it still can only be six plants.
Six plants, yeah.
So-
Could be six really big plants.
I mean, well, you, but you could imagine, let's imagine a greenhouse, which I don't have, but I wish I could have a greenhouse, for vegetables, not for this. I've never grown-
She hastens to say in the public domain.
No, I've never grown, you know, anyway. If you were going to have a greenhouse, you would want one greenhouse, and your tomatoes would be on one side, and, you know, your whatever else elsewhere. So, I mean, so if you, I don't know. I just think it's really overreach. So I, you know, and maybe that's a good solution, but I don't feel we know we have a problem.
Yeah, the size, I don't know if the size is a good suggestion either. I just was noticing that other cities didn't have this two or more, but they did have a size on the space, which was interesting, and ours doesn't. So I don't know if maybe, you know, we should think about it.
I think all the municipalities are struggling at this point, because we're all feeling our way-
It's new.
-in a relatively new situation.
Right.
Except for Colorado.
And even then, some of the ordinances are still, there's still a lot of ups and downs, even after years of it being passed.
So my reaction on this is, I don't want something that feels like busybody ordinance.
Exactly.
Because, for example, although I'm very sympathetic to Ken's comment, for several years, I had a neighbor who smoked cigarettes. And the odor came over, because the wind blows the way the wind blows, and it was an annoyance to me. But it was, you know, what I could say, it's, if you choose to live in a city or a town, as opposed to in 500 acres in the middle of Montana, there are certain compromises you're going to have to put up with. With that said, the idea of having neighbors being able to say, I smell it, no. That I found not in keeping with the harmony, basically, that Sally was talking about, which is if you have a problem with your neighbor, you go over and talk to your neighbor, which is what I did, which is why we don't have cigars anymore, thank God. But with that said, having an enclosed structure with a filtration system, whether it's five feet from the property line or 10 feet of the property line, I think addresses the physicality of the problem. And so, I don't support moving, reducing the accessory separation, because I think the building itself with the filtration system does that. And I can't support putting, pitting neighbors against each other, waiving an ordinance. I find that very non-Los Altos. So I would look for a recommendation or not to city council, to someone to make a motion, because we seem to have unanimity, which would be a good thing in this situation, since otherwise, we can't have carrying motions.
Well, so are you saying that of the three proposals you'd support, the second one, which requires that structures used to produce cannabis must have proper ventilation air-
That is the only one I could support.
So I have a question for you, Heather. Let's say we discover this, let's say we don't adopt this. I mean, right now, it's not-
You recommend against the-
You recommend, yeah.
And there is a problem, and there is abuse. And then we decide, okay, to fix that, we now need to, let's now adopt this. Or let's say someone is already, a neighbor is already growing. Does the neighbor have to come into compliance after the fact? So if we discover there is widespread abuse and that-
Come into compliance? Well, I mean, you still-
Like, with the person who doesn't have an air filtration system on their-
Greenhouse.
-greenhouse, that is causing a nuisance, however they report it, can we then say, okay, you need to have a filtration system, and then have that person have to comply with it?
Through a nuisance process, is what you're suggesting.
Through a nuisance process, or if we pass an ordinance, this ordinance, after this person has installed there and been growing, would they have to come into compliance with this ordinance?
Can you make it retroactive?
If the ordinance passes, they would need to be in compliance with the ordinance, whatever the ordinance ended up providing.
Retroactively? If someone already had a greenhouse, and it already had marijuana plants in it, and it didn't have a filtration system? If an ordinance passed-
Right, that's what I'm saying.
Is that, are they then not compliant?
It's not grandfathered like zoning.
Exactly.
It's not like zoning where it's grandfathered.
It seems to me like, if somebody complained about an existing structure that was creating odor issues, that would be defined as a nuisance, so we would have to take some type of enforcement action.
Enforcement actions.
But I think one major point we're all missing here is that, from the description of the speaker, that is not in compliance with the current ordinance.
Right, there's no-
There's no locking, there's no solid enclosure. So, again, I really don't support making any changes when what you're describing actually is not-
Already non-conforming.
Already non-conforming. So, you know, because if you look at, anyway, I don't want to read it, but-
Would that person have to become conforming now?
If the, if someone were asked to follow up, then I don't see why not, because it's not conforming with the new ordinance already. Forget about these changes in front of us tonight.
So kind of playing off of what Acting Chair Bresik mentioned, if you just look at Section 8, in the first sentence there, "Any structure used for the cultivating of cannabis must have proper ventilation and air filtration to prevent mold damage and to prevent cannabis plant odors or particles from becoming a public nuisance." If you were to simply recommend that be included to the city council, at least you'd put something in our enforcement quiver to be able to address situations like the public speakers brought-
Look at Number 6. Number 6 already does address that.
"All areas used for cannabis cultivation must be located in a fully enclosed and secure structure," which is defined as "a building, greenhouse, or legal structure which has a complete roof enclosure supported by connecting-"
Walls.
Walls.
"extending from the ground to the roof, which is secure against unauthorized entry."
And so, a polyethylene tent-
Blah, blah, blah.
Is not compliant at this moment, and therefore, if someone were to go to the public counter in the building department and say, I believe there's a nonconformity here, someone there would be able to tell them what the next step was.
Correct.
So, with that said, can I have a motion, please?
Could I possibly say one?
I'm sorry, the public, you can talk to staff afterward.
Sorry, one thing. Is it something that maybe we should ask the city councils to consider size of the space, and like, the size should reflect?
You know, the thing, the reason I'm resisting that is because there are only four of us.
Oh, okay, yeah.
If that's something you want to bring up at another time, let's see what happens with this first.
Sure.
And then, we know about it. But I think we should have a full discussion if we're going to do that.
I think we've already seen that we're addressing a problem that already doesn't even fit the current ordinance.
Very true, yeah.
So, again, why over-legislate in this case? So I'm going to make a motion that the planning commission not recommend any changes for the city council to make to the current ordinance in place.
Can I have a second?
Second.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
I opposed no. So the answer is, the, we are not recommending any changes currently. So, the next item on our agenda-
Can we say because why? Because I think some of the becauses are important, which is, A, this is a new ordinance in place, we need to give it some time to work, that the example from the speaker, and I don't know about other speakers potentially, have not actually, you know, the current ordinance-
Is not being, not being-
Is not being exercised for noncompliance, and that we'd rather look at this again at a later date if we get many complaints from various different parts of the city.
And if at a later date, one of the things we consider is reducing the area that a greenhouse could be that's cultivating. And we can consider that at that time, if there's a problem.
Or at other best practices.
Okay.
So just to clarify, then, this will go to council with a recommendation against the adoption, that's correct, right? So the council will receive this information?
Yes. Okay. The next item on our agenda is our favorite, story polls.
Which makes me wonder whether I should give you my update on, or at least a partial update on the city planning, city council meeting from January 8th, where there were two story poll items on the agenda?
Well, actually, I was reading about it at the town crier just today, so we can discuss it after we go through this.
I just listened to it, too.
Did you listen to it, too? Okay, so then I don't, we'll leave the update till the end where it usually is, then.
Thank you, Ellen.
I almost feel like, why are we, we are so not aligned with their thinking?
Well, I think this is an important part, because I specifically requested that John could come up with a, could come up with a modification that at least addressed one of the significant issues we have now with the timing of it. And then, everything else, as you remember from the joint meeting we had with city council, I pointed out that we probably didn't want to review that again, since we had unanimously recommended against it, so the ordinance itself. So given that-
And the majority of them are strongly supportive of it.
Right, so in that case, I think this particular one addresses an issue that we have dealt with, which is the story polls being up for an inordinate length of time, creating both an ugly thing to look at, a pedestrian hazard, and something that we don't need to deal with if we can get this thing through. So, John.
Well, as you, as you mentioned, this is something that you talked to the city council back at your joint meeting back in October of 2018, and you asked the council if they would be willing to allow you to look at bringing back to them or developing recommendations to the story poll policy that's been adopted by the council by resolution. And I did get an email from Commissioner Bresik asking if there was one section of the story poll, here's section three, that could be updated in a way to limit the length of time that the story polls could be in place. Understand that right now, the story polls go up 20 days before the first public hearing on a project, and remain in place until the last public hearing on the project.
And sometimes, that's an inordinate length of time.
As you've seen, we've had some projects where the stories and polls have been up for close to a year on a project site. Not sure that they still would have been up after the last storms that we all experienced last few evenings, but anyway, that is the policy. The language that you have in front of you as a suggested alteration that would require that the 30 days after the first public hearing, the story polls and netting would be photographed, those photographs, and that photograph would be done by the applicant. Following that, the photographs would be given to staff to review. The staff would pick the photographs that best represent street views of the project, or how the project would fit or tie into adjoining properties and the streetscape. Once those photographs were selected, they'd be posted on a board in some all-weather format. The board would be placed on the site for people to stop by and refer at a location that was easy for public to examine, and then the story polls and netting would come down. But the board with the photographs of the story polls would remain in place until the final public hearing on the project. So that's one of the various procedures that you're taking a look at as part of your review of the story poll rules.
I have, see, no one from the member of the public who would like to speak on this. So, given that, I think we could proceed right away to discussion. I initiated this after our discussion. Mayrus, you want to have a comment on this? Let's just go down, because-
Sure.
What we would have to do is, if we're interested in this, we could recommend this change to, recommend this to go to city council for their discussion and action.
Sure. I guess if I have to be completely honest, I just think that graphic representation and visual representation is so advanced now, that I think in 2019, I'm surprised that we even have story polls. I just think that making someone depict a building for a year, when, you know, as Zach kind of showed us, we have a 3D model, we have all these new developments shown right there, it's, everything is just so advanced at this point, that I don't think you need it. And I just was researching a couple things, a couple alternatives, that people have suggested in the past. Proposing buildings through photo simulations and computer models, photo simulations that include a set landmark, so if there's a landmark, for instance, in this one, then that is kind of the point, the height point, I guess. Using a crane or a single pole to show the height, not multiple. Only using story polls if it's X amount higher than the closest adjacent building. A sign on the property that shows the rendering from that point of where you're standing. I just think that there's so many things that you can do, and we're just so advanced now, I don't think we need to have it, but-
Well, can you, can you support this modification that's yellowed out?
I don't think, I mean, I really don't know, but I think if everyone else was on board, I probably would say yes. I just don't know. The whole concept is, seems kind of strange to me.
Well, except that, as in a priori, that you're preaching to the choir here.
Yeah.
But we thought that was a very bad idea.
Oh, okay.
And understand that city council, in their infinite wisdom, disagrees with that, and so we are stuck with story polls.
Yeah.
We'll hear more about that when we get Sally to fill this in on city council meeting. But with that said, can you support limiting, if we have to have them, how long they're up?
Yes, yeah.
Okay, that's all I'm asking on this one.
Yeah.
How about you, Renee?
Yeah, I mean, I, yes, I want this to be, the timeframe for this to be as minimal as possible, because I just, to think that, in like, the center of the Silicon Valley, where we have virtual reality, we created it, that we have to see, you know, polls and netting to imagine. But I do think that the wording is awkward.
Oh, good.
I think that it should be, the idea is that it should stay up for 30 days, and then they should start this process. But the way it's worded, if you take it literally, it says that they actually can't take the photos until 30 days after the first public hearing. And I think they should be able to photograph them day one, if that's the day it looks best, so that-
Yeah.
The location of the 30 days after seems awkward.
Ah, okay.
The idea is that, that nothing gets taken down before 30 days. So maybe it's that, it take out the 30 days-
The verb gets moved.
It says, you know, "The story poll shall be photographed," who cares when they do it, "from several vantage points, and those photos shall be submitted to staff." I also don't think it matters when they submit those photos to staff, right? If they want to start the process earlier, then let them, right? It might be a weird timing, those last 30 to 40 days. But the idea is that-
At the 30-day point.
Right, after 30 days, this display board can be set with approved photos, and then the netting can be removed. So the 30 days is really about when, how long they have to keep it up after the hearing, and not when they photograph it, when they start talking to staff, when they get approval.
Oh, good clarification. I like that. And can you support the limitation to the amount of time the story polls are up, Commissioner Meadows?
I do, but I feel that, having particularly sat through the meeting, but as I understand our charter, it's, that is the minimum we should be doing, but I feel that our job is to send back, we still, here are best practices for story polls.
Those are some great suggestions.
Here are what we recommend be done for Los Altos. If all else fails, and you don't care what best practices are, and other ways that we can do this that provide greater ability for the public and ourselves to understand these new developments, because it wasn't just the public that might get confused, then we would at minimum propose this limitation to prevent long-term blight to the town. But I really think it's an abdication of our responsibility to not at least say, we, you know, this, this really is not best practices.
Okay, I understand your point. I understand you can support a 30-day maximum keeping the stupid things up.
In the context overall, that this, it's really still, you know, at least with the four members here-
I hear you.
Feel that the- Feel that the, the policy does not really reflect the best way to do what they're trying to achieve with the objectives.
With that said, I, I agree with that. I have to say that, um, I believe this is a case of where diplomacy is, where you tell someone to go to hell and they look forward to the trip. I believe that it's up to staff, and John in particular, when this goes to City Council, to say, "Here is a proposal that was discussed at the joint meeting, that in order to prevent blight in the town by these story polls, that there should be a limit of 30 days." And I take to heart excellent suggestions by Renit, that it be shifted around so that the 30 days is clear, that after 30 days, the photographs go up whenever they do them, so that at that point, we don't have to see them anymore. If you want, we can ask John to put a little note on it that says, as Sally pointed out, that there is still a concurrence on the majority of planning commission, which happens to be sitting here, that it is not, story polls are far from the best practice, and on many levels, um, they're an embarrassment in our town, and that we want to make it clear that we're not abrogating that position, but we're giving this as, uh, it's a different problem we're attempting to solve here.
And I, I would even make these suggestions, because it feels like they lack creativity in coming up with solutions around it.
I'm not sure that there's a lack of creativity. I think these were all presented at the time, that we were talking about story polls, but, I mean-
I would throw that, I would throw some of these much, these suggestions, workarounds, because they are going to have more people coming in for-
Well, we're going to hear more about it, yes.
Every project.
One other thing is, so that they don't, um, just, just dismiss this recommendation thinking, well, they're, they're against the whole idea, I think we should give them additional reasons in addition to the blight that this is causing.
And safety.
That it is a pedestrian hazard, and also it outlasts, outlasts its usefulness, because the intention is to make sure that the public has the opportunity to see it in advance of a public hearing. So that is accomplished, and it's, its mission is accomplished-
Accomplished.
And it outlasts its usefulness the longer it is put up. So, try to really sell them on this, too.
Right.
Well, let me ask you this, how comfortable are you leaving this to staff to craft a politically correct approach to present, um, this modification that stops the blight and also expresses the general tenor of, continuing tenor of the commission with suggestions enumerated, virtual reality, projections? I mean, the mind boggles, but-
Also the-
I don't want to put staff in the position of being, like, we should be the bad cop in this situation, so.
Yeah, yeah.
Well, do you want, do you want to craft, I mean, that means we should continue this and craft it and come back with something that we can forward. I'm, I'm really looking forward to getting story polls down because, I mean, that storm yesterday, if the polls had been up on Main, they would have been all over the street. There's no way those guy wires would have held. And that's pretty scary.
Also, the, from the last meeting that they talked about, it, they mentioned that a lot of people were asking for exemptions, but they have to understand that no developer is going to willingly want to put story polls, because it's an added expense and they're just going to find ways to find exemptions, exemptions.
Yeah, so, I totally agree, and also, I think that, um, I'll put this down so I can see you, sorry. You know, this is actually a new planning commission since that decision was made, because myself and Alex, um, weren't on there for the original story poll recommendations, so, and certainly Mayrus and, you know-
And Kim.
And Kim, so, you know, I, I, I think, yeah.
Wow, I didn't realize that four new people also reached the same conclusion as the-
Yeah.
Right, no, so we weren't there the first time around, so it's, it's a different planning commission, it's a different City Council. I, I, my mind was boggled that, that even the fact that some of these things are zero set pack and that you have 20, uh, was it 20 feet of guy wire going into the next property? That didn't even seem to faze, uh, council. That's crazy.
Yeah.
So, I don't want to be-
Wait a minute, we can't say crazy, what we have to say is-
Interesting.
This is, at the moment, this is, unless to get a difference from City Council currently, this is the ordinance. And so, I think, in my opinion, if we could recommend to City Council the modifications that were proposed with the changes that make more sense to clarify what the intent is. And at the same time, I'm willing to say, put in a single sentence that says-
Summarizes our-
"The current planning commission still feels that story polls are an inappropriate solution to the problem of informing Los Altos citizens of construction that's coming for all the reasons that we have cited in the first discussion and we would be willing to discuss again." I think we can only beat a dead horse so far, guys.
But again, it's a different council, it's, it's not, it's not still-
It's not a totally different council.
No, but it's not, but it's, it's just like, it's not a totally different planning commission, but the word isn't "still," it's like, the, the current planning commission is reiterating some of the concerns that the, the previous recommendation supported, and we, it is our, I feel it's our responsibility to say, "Here's our concerns again," and not say it in one sentence, but say-
I mean, I feel like I would rather bifurcate this and put this through and get this done, and then we can, at our next joint meeting, say, "We would like to revisit story polls again."
Well, as these two situations continue to-
Continue happening again and again, yes.
With this predicament that they're in and how they're going to do it, I think we'll have another opportunity to weigh in on it.
One, one thing that I, I'll say also is that I think that the fact that we have this model, I think that one could argue that if you zoomed in, I, I use SketchUp all the time, if you zoomed in and did a bird's eye view looking up at a potential structure, that's way more descriptive than a story poll, so.
Well, you, there are people who would disagree with you, I have to say, because I remember Anita would often say, "You're showing us these pictures, but I want to see it at my eye level walking down the street."
Yeah.
Now we have that tool.
Right.
Right, well, that's the point.
And I also feel that the orange netting is not a good representation of the building that will be there. Are we going to have buildings that have, you know, two feet of orange mess around, you know, it, it's actually a hideous representation. I'm passionate tonight, aren't I?
I could tell.
About all of ours.
Don't hold back on this.
Don't hold back. No, really, it, it's an over-exaggeration of, of the, you know, of making things more horrible than they, they will be. So, I, I just, again, you know, the planning commission, still for a variety of reasons, feels the current policy isn't, um, to be recommended, isn't the best practices for the following reasons. In lieu, to make something, uh, happen quickly, you know, here's, here's the wording, you know, that we've discussed, that we can at least put in as a patch, um, while further exploring best practices that will work better for everyone's objectives.
Can I, can I make a suggestion to the commission?
Yes, sure.
My recommendation, given the input you've provided so far, is that you continue this and refer it back to staff to develop a revised set of language here that you've reviewed this evening, and then develop a draft memo that you can bless at your next planning commission meeting that would go on to the City Council that expresses your concerns and your-
That sounds good to me.
That sounds great, yep.
Okay, so, can I have a motion to continue? Do we, no, we don't actually have a recommendation here, do we? There wasn't an action point of those.
I'll move to continue.
We see we don't even-
It's a discussion.
Discussion of Los Altos story polls policy.
Yes. So that, I will move to continue this discussion so that staff can make the revisions and consolidate our comments.
Okay.
To the council.
Yes, to the next, February 7th meeting?
Okay. A second on that?
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
There we go, unanimous again. And I will state for the record that I'm in support of both points, I will not be at the next meeting. So, for what it's worth, I'm on the record. Okay, now, I'm very interested in the commissioners' reports and comments. Sally?
Okay, so is, uh, do we have a report on the December 11th? I don't remember, that may still be pending, maybe, but anyway, I'll give, I'll report on the, the January 8th, um, council meeting. So, um, one of the consent items hearkened back to, um, a project that we saw, and so the council did approve the tentative parcel map for, I mean, approved the final parcel map, uh, for 555 South El Monte, um, if you all recall that one, I drive by that frequently. So, um, and yes, there were two story poll items, both 425 First Street and then 389 First Street, which is the one that's on the corner right across, um, is it Whitney or Lyle? From the hardware store, so, um, and the discussion went on for about, yeah, there, you're showing us, perfect. The discussion went on-
Thank you, Zach, you're having fun.
I'm having, am I getting better at driving on a touch?
Outstanding.
Yay! Yeah, you, you had your meat cut out for you at the council meeting.
And I got the mouse right at the end of all of that.
Yeah, yeah.
I'll be prepared.
Why are some of them in color and others are white? What's the difference?
Oh, go ahead.
The base model, um, this, and this is a product of the Downtown Vision, R M, um, Bateman, their design team, put together a base model of downtown Los Altos, the full triangle. So everything that was existing at the time of the model being built is in white. So then, these two new buildings, um, we provided this model to the applicants, they plugged in their model, gave it back to us, so basically, this will be a growing building model every time an applicant comes in, we'll give them a copy, they plug in theirs, give us a copy back, so then we'll have one updated, so now, as the next one comes in, we'll have the benefit of the prior model, so, over time, we'll have more detailed models than the original base model, because it'll be hyper-specific because they're created by the architect.
You notice the detail on top of the hardware store, the old ice cream?
Yes, the, the old ice cream thing, yeah, I did see that. Very cute. So, anyway, so those two developments, both 425 and 389, uh, was done in a little bit of an odd fashion, and then they started on 425, and then they, they didn't take public comment on 425, they went into 389, and then they kind of went back and did some of this and some of that, and, um, the bottom line was that the 425 was denied, uh, the request for exemption, and so they would have to come, and, and, well, let me just skip, and 389 was not denied, but they still have to work with staff to make some, uh, changes to come forward with something that might be approved. But in essence, that's what also could happen with 425, they're denied, and so they can come forward with a entirely new plan that could, in theory, be approved as well. So, there was a, a denial and a, not, would you call it a continuance?
Referral back to-
Referral back to, um, to then come back, but in essence, it was really the same effect, I think, on both-
Same discussion.
On both projects, and, um, but they found one, they found 389 a little bit more compelling than 425, which they chose to deny outright. But that's where you began to hear the impact of, you know, if you have zero or even, you know, five-foot setbacks, and you have these 20-foot guide wires, um, you know, the effect that's going to make, um, and all the stuff going into the parking lots, and so they didn't find that compelling, I guess, because the first example of story polls, um, from Mercia's, which is for, for-
Forty-eight.
Forty-eight fifty-six on El Camino, um, they granted-
He made it work.
Well, he made it work, they granted some exemption, and then he tried to get it all waived, and then they made him do the original exemption, or exception, whatever it is, um, and so he made that work. But it wasn't really the original one, because they had at least granted some waivers, and then, of course, it fell into the roof, as we saw, one of the poles fell onto a neighboring property's roof. Yes, it's in our packet.
Surprise, surprise.
It's in our packet, so, I mean, to me, it was, it actually illustrated the point, rather than, illustrated the point that there are concerns, rather than illustrating the point-
That the concerns are valid.
That the concerns are valid, rather than illustrating, well, therefore then we don't need to change any of it when anyone comes forward, but anyway, I won't go down. So it was a long discussion, and, uh, one was denied, and one was referred back to staff, but in essence, they'll both come back presumably with new plans.
I mean, if, if applicant says, "This is dangerous, I need an exemption," and the city says, "No," isn't the city a little responsible if something happens? Isn't there a little liability, isn't, is there some concern about that?
Well, I think if you have appropriate findings, that's the, you know, issue, make sure you have appropriate findings to support the decision.
So the, and it says that the city requires the developer, or the, to waive-
Yes.
What is the ling, lingual language, that it's not the city's fault.
Demnification.
Indemnify, but really, if, if they've put in for an exemption, and they say, "No," and then they put the thing up without the exemption, and then it falls over, um-
Despite their best efforts, there, there are 60 mile an hour winds, what do you say?
Yeah, I mean, the city is really indemnified, I-
Well, they make them sign the paper, and they can just sue, anybody can sue whether
We all sign our user agreements every time we download an app.
Yeah.
I don't think, no, anyway, but, so, I've been opinionated enough tonight, let me move on to the next item. Um, there, there was a discussion on Park and Luffy update, uh, the, the bottom line was they did, uh, adopt the new, um, rates, I think, um, but, and I don't, they weren't in, or I didn't see what those rates were, so I, I can't tell you how much the increase was, maybe Zach or John, you might remember?
Seventy-eight thousand dollars?
Yeah, the-
Or per unit?
Yeah, per multifamily unit, which is really the most likely effective projects, given the development we're seeing forward, was a thirteen thousand dollar increase over the current per-unit price. It went from thirty-six to forty, oh, that'd be forty-eight, forty-nine thousand per unit? So, I mean, and, and based on staff projections, um, if every, all the development that's kind of being pondered right now moves forward, that could net the city, um, four or five million dollars more in Park and Lou collection over the next three to four years.
Right, and so I think that was, um, a good move to do that sooner rather than later, but the bigger, so that resolution was adopted, but then there's some inquiry going on, Chris Diaz will look at answering some questions to see whether they need to change the ordinance, so Jeannie and others had concern about whether, if you charge more per unit, are we then being counterproductive for trying to get more BMRs? And so can we create an exemption or waive, uh, the fees for BMRs, and is there a different, you know, so, questions around that. Could we adopt, um, a, um, Park and Lou fee for commercial properties? Chris will come back with some information on that. And would there be a waiver process for senior housing as well? Because, you know, you don't want to disincent some things that you want to happen, so that'll be interesting to watch as it comes forward, as they think about tweaking that ordinance, because then that would come here, presumably, Chris would report back to council.
Yeah, it's not part of the zoning code, so it wouldn't-
Oh, it's not part of the zoning code, so they, it doesn't come to us, okay. All right.
I got momentarily excited when I saw that, that they were talking about parking.
Yeah, then you, then you were surprised.
Yeah, they knew.
Park, park in new. Guess again.
Park, yes. Then there was a, a discussion about SB 50, which has recently been introduced by Weiner at the, um, state level, and, uh, I mean, it was a discussion, but the bottom line for at least three of them is it was really too early to spend much time trying to, um, see, I mean, because it could go by the wayside like eight, eight-two-seven did, or, or whatever, but, um, of course, Anita in particular wanted to be proactive, and so, um-
There was a lot of action in the town choir letters about that as well.
Yes, so, um, so we'll see, and that also ties in with, from the December 11th meeting, which was the CASA compact, um, which, so I think there's a lot of movement afoot, and we'll see where they go, um, with trying to retain some level of local control. I think I heard at the tentative council calendar that the Downtown Buildings Committee recommendations were coming to planning committee?
They are.
At some point?
I don't have a date specifically.
You don't have a date?
They're going to bring those back for you to review.
Okay, um-
That's a long time coming back.
And, uh, so I think that was basically it.
Okay.
Yes.
We have new, Ivan did send out new representative calendars, so we all know when we're supposed to be there. And since this is my opportunity as a chair to say it, and if you're not going to be able to make it, let someone know, and if you're not going to make a meeting, let John know ahead of time so that he doesn't get sandbagged by inadequate quorum at any given moment, but other than that-
I have a couple things to share. First, I'd like to let you know that your City Council representative, who is now Anita Nender, she wasn't able to attend the meeting tonight because she is, is at some league training, League California Cities Training for new City Council members. And, um, the other thing is that tomorrow, starting tomorrow afternoon at four o'clock and running till about eight o'clock- is the City Council's first session on their priority setting for 2019. And to kick that off, we'll be providing some land use training to the City Council. So, you're welcome to attend that and sit in the audience and hear what we have to share with the council in terms of land use and application processing and permits and so forth.
That be here in council?
That'll be here in the council chambers, beginning at 4:00. And then they pick up their priority goal-setting session again on Saturday, starting at 9:00 a.m., again here in the council chambers till about 3:00 p.m. So, they're going to have a busy weekend.
Any other future items for discussion? Okay, you're adjourned.